Seven eleven and we are back in public session. Coming out of executive session, we have an executive session amendment is to discuss potential settlement agreement with a particular pedagogical employee and matters made confidential by attorney-client privilege. And we do have two resolutions. The first resolution, BOA eleven, non-aligned, be it resolved in accordance with section one A of policy number nine two one five entitled "Non-Aligned Employees' Salary, Benefits, and Conditions of Employment," that the Board of Education hereby approves a six percent increase to the salaries of the position's current titles in such policy effective July one, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution carries with a unanimous vote. The second resolution is BOA twelve, approve employee agreement, be it resolved that the Board hereby approves an employee-related agreement dated August ninth, 2023, in the matter of employee number four eight zero seven, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference into the minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the Board President is hereby authorized to sign this employment-related agreement on the Board's behalf. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? And the motion carries. Our next agenda item is our public hearing on the district-wide safety plan. So I invite Mr. LaShawn Parker and his team, if he has a team.
Tonight I'd like to present a high-level overview of the Kingston City School District district-wide safety plan. New York State requires this plan after its conception be by the district-wide safety team be reviewed, updated by the same team, then be available for public comment for thirty days. A hearing is then held and a plan then the plan may be adopted by the Board of Education and placed on the district-wide website. Now that our thirty-day comment period has concluded, I'd like to thank those who took the time to comment and give feedback about the plan. The team is appreciative and all comments are taken into consideration when adopting both district-wide and building-level safety plans. In this presentation, we'll touch base on components of safety, preparedness, the SAVE Act and New York State required teams and plans, district-wide and building-level safety plans, and changes to the 2023-24 KCSD district-wide plan. The five preparedness missions. These missions describe the or this mission describes the most schools and most national schools' approach to being prepared. Prevention, mitigation, protection, response, and recovery are the three preparedness terms we use when taking on this mission. The goals of all schools is to have the ability and preparedness to prevent, mitigate, protect, respond, and recover. To help schools do this, Schools Against Violence in Education or the SAVE Act was created. SAVE standardized prevention, mitigation, protection, response, and recovery. It requires schools to coordinate with law enforcement, emergency first responders, and through guidance, recommendation, using templates and best practices, help schools achieve Who is responsible for the plan? The district-wide safety team is responsible for the district-wide plan and the building-level team is responsible for the building-level safety plan. The district-wide team is made up of and not limited to representatives of the school board, students, teachers, admin, community members, law enforcement, and safety personnel. The building team is made up of teachers, admin, parents, school safety personnel, custodian staff, and many staff members from that particular building. The district-wide safety plan versus the building-level plan. The district-wide plan is broad, conceptual, based on policies and procedures. It must be a board-approved, adopted, and shared with the public. The building plan, building-level plan are building specific details, information specific with names, phone numbers, and sensitive building information, and it is confidential. Changes made in this plan or plan for this year as opposed to last year, we are having more or we have more clear and detailed explanations of building-level teams and what they do. We've updated our community partner list. We have brought on Altaris, our safety consultants. We have more information on community trainings and workshops, more detailed job description of security monitors and SROs, addition of our threat assessment teams and what they do, removal of sensitive building-level information and procedures also were actually removed, not added, to the plan itself. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the community members, our board, faculty, and staff as they help us build a safer and prepared school district. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the report and thank you for leaving the comments that the public offered as well. When can we expect Altaris to make recommendations based on their audit? Is that like a year-long audit or because I would imagine that when they're done, they would have recommendations to enhance whatever protocols we have to start with.
Yeah, informally, I've met with them and we've spoken on a number of things that we should change or maybe take a look at, but formally and officially, they have to walk through every school, meet with every individual school administrator, which they've been doing, I believe. Tomorrow, we meet with Mahar and Graves. So I believe that's the last two buildings that they do their assessment with. They may give us a hundred-and-twenty-page report on the things we need to work on, the things we're doing well, the things we're doing not so well, and then we'll make determinations at that point.
Okay. In terms of hardening or adding certain things, do they include that in the...
Yeah, all the above. There was a fifty-question survey they do with each principal. Very, very detailed.
Great.
Looking forward as well. Anyone else?
Can you put that presentation back up, specifically that page that listed all of those things, just so we can see them or something? So and I also just had questions about also about Altaris. So it sounds like that is kind of coming to close, that consultation process, and so now it'll be a recommendation process?
Yes.
Can you talk about then timeline and how decisions get made about what pieces will be included in the plans and then how public those, you know, what elements can be public and what elements can't be?
Right. The district-wide plan, what we have here, they helped with somewhat. It's not going to look much different than what you see now in our district-wide plan unless something changes from the state and we have to deal with those requirements within the plan. The plan is so broad, honestly, the most, the plan is really a template from New York State and we're just fulfilling a lot of our requirements through the state. Obviously, they translate into building plans. The district-wide safety team would have more information about the building-level plans. We're just so, the building-level plans are tight. We hold them tight. They're very confidential. We don't want to let the other team know our playbook. So I don't know how public those portions would be. It'd be something we'd have to deal with through the district-wide safety team. Maybe us having something here with you all and we can get more specific about exactly what's going to take place. Timeline-wise, again, it's going to have to be a decision we make as a team, the district team, because it's going to be a lot of stuff. Not that we have a lot to change, but it's going to be a beefy report. So once we hash through it, we can decide what we want to tackle first. If I were to guess, if I, my recommendation to Altaris is our drills and being prepared with our drills and having secondary responses beyond what we normally do as our normal response for this, it's just simple as this is our exit out, guess what, what if there's a fire there? Let's try this exit here. So really trying to build confidence within our schools individually on how comfortable they feel with just responding to an emergency without becoming nervous. Being able to make muscle memory, that's my recommendation to them. If that happens, that'd be great, but we don't know until we read the report and...
Right. And I imagine some things are going to be high-cost, some things low-cost, we'll have to prioritize, and then some things will take longer time than others, so that makes...
We'll tie in with the capital plan or smart bond. We'll tie it in with that depending on what exactly things are looking like.
Maybe we can commit to having our communications team working with the safety team at some point to figure out how, what and how can we communicate it to the public so that people are aware of, you know, I understand that there's some confidentiality issues for sure, but you know, where the appropriate line is for what we can kind of let the public deal about.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then just outside of recommendations to the building plans or the district-wide plan, assuming they're making recommendations on changes revolving around whether we're hardening buildings, whether we're doing metal detectors, are they making those type of recommendations and are any of those recommendations going to be ready for us to act on prior to September going back to school?
Um, yes. With the recommendations, yeah, they, it's top to bottom, they're boots on the ground, they're very thorough. Not only do we have an in-house advisor, their team virtually is available. I literally sent this over to Altaris two hours ago after they're closed and I got immediately a reply back of how things looked in the plan and so forth. And they will make decisions on some of the harder, hardening and some of the harder decisions we have to make as a safety team, district-wide. They, they're in a number of schools and currently they also are in, I want to say, Hudson, schools in Rockland County. They added five schools in our region just as we grabbed them also. So looking at those schools and what they're doing and looking at our schools, and our schools are so individualized that it's hard to make the same decision for every single school, unless we're talking about something conceptual like metal detectors, something to that effect. But other things, hardening things, really are going to depend on each individual school, how we can harden, what's the best option in hardening certain things.
Do they even, sorry, to fall on, are they giving into personnel recommendations like SROs in certain buildings or additional monitors and safety officers?
Um, they haven't mentioned that yet, but they are willing to, they're willing to make those recommendations as in very specific of who those people are? No?
Not who they are, if we should be adding or if there should...
Most definitely. Most definitely. That's all they do is deal with schools. They're very, very knowledgeable on what schools go through and deal with each day. So they're giving us great advice at this point. Yep.
I guess I have a procedural question. I don't know if it's actually for you or for so on board, but so the confidential components, then are those ever provided to us for an executive session discussion around the building plans or is that for the safety plan? Like who is seeing those confidential components and do we have any opportunity to talk about those?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
The building-wise.
The building... So the district ones are for good reason, right?
Sure.
General and vague and...
I mean, the board can review, the board can review that. We don't put them out public for obvious reasons. We don't want to put in public a building that plan is to evacuate to X. Then everyone knows we're evacuating to X. That's not, you know, you don't want, there's sort of certain things that need to be, you know, held to us within the buildings.
It just makes sense to me. Maybe if the safety committee brought it and discussed it during executive session, then we actually might have some, some feedback or some, we would know what we're approving over for the entire safety plan.
Right. I mean, the building-level plans, the board doesn't approve. The district-level plan, it does.
Okay. All right. Proceed.
I have no problem with that. If there's something we can do, I do feel trying to be transparent, especially with the board, would be a benefit and you could actually get the full picture of what it looks like from start to finish. The building plans are submitted to the portal, to the state portal, and you could see the entire plan digitally, so maybe that's something we can do at some point in time, but I'm definitely willing to come in and have you guys to go look at that.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question.
Of course.
It's not necessarily in those, it's more in the details of the actual safety plan that's proposed. There's talk about the tabletops at each school.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if maybe that's something you could also know. I think you choose sites specifically some what your, you choose what your tabletop is and who's involved. It might be interesting for the board to see maybe what they were or what the results were or anything like that. I mean, I think there's, when you're talking about if this door's on fire, where are you going to go and have like mock scenarios?
Yes.
I think the tabletop is similar to that kind of, but it might be interesting that I consider to sort of also step if it's possible.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't see why not. Tabletops, something could happen right now. It's not necessarily just about school and school hours. It's building safety. So we're looking into evening, you know, just as we go beyond the normal school hours and we have so many things going on in the evenings, we're looking at that from start of the day till ten-thirty at night. So I don't see why not. Something could definitely happen right now and right here, so.
Exactly.
Sorry.
And our members of the district safety committee get good detailed briefings on all of that in the committee.
Yeah. I just have just one last quick question. It says additional threat assessment teams. I thought we had threat assessment teams at every school and in district-wise. So what do we mean additional?
I'm not sure of the wording. We started out with, with teams all, we've had teams through the entire district since we announced it. Not sure why I used the word additional. Just did, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not an indication of us not having them.
Right, because that's what we did have in the plan. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, if we do, there is an additional team through the county that's, I work with the county teams and the other, the other threat assessment teams around the county. It's a lot, it's a lot bigger, threat assessment's a lot bigger than anybody's really realizing it's really coming to fruition. So again, I didn't... One hundred percent. One hundred percent. Oh, she was asking could it incorporate with what we do here. We meet, or I meet with the county safety team. It's monthly. So we meet at the sheriff's office, it's all, all schools from Ulster County, so principals, superintendents, SROs, and they've, we've created a threat assessment team countywide to assist with schools. We're just kind of starting with their threat assessments. They don't take their place here, threat assessment team, but they come in and they help you handle situations that are a little more daunting than, you know, and they have access to county resources, so it's, it's really cool that we're doing that. So that's, we go off for days.
It's going to be part of a comprehensive effort like that. I think that's really important.
Yes, indeed.
I also think the language, I'm sorry, the language, I think that the language in the, how you have it written, the red parts about the threat assessment team, even though it's not additional, I think that language really needs to be there to help the public to sort of understand because that's actually a practice that's recommended by...
It's not just school.
Homeland Security, like everyone. It's just, it's a, but I don't think, I think maybe having it worded there so people can actually see that is really important. So I really like that part. That was it.
Very good. Thanks.
So we will be approving this plan at the end of August, correct? And I'm anticipating that there may be some additional changes that you will be making based on feedback from Altaris and maybe some of the final revisions. I know there are some people that are currently listed that either are no longer in the position or no longer, so and, and you'll make all of those upgrades so that when we're doing our final approval, we'll be approving the final plan.
Yeah, the updated plan, the amended piece, yeah. We are meeting, we're scheduled to meet next week, the district-wide safety plan, uh, district-wide safety team is scheduled to meet next week, so we'll review the comments, we'll review again with Altaris, and we'll nip, tuck, and tie everything tight and make sure it's presentable to you guys and, you know, and we will await your decision.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yes. It is a public hearing, yes.
Oh, yeah, sure, sorry. Tried to get away. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was going to speak quick. I'll ask the questions from here, okay? Okay, quite frankly, can I ask you this question?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So we have the district-wide safety plan. You discussed it in its entirety.
Yes.
And have they met all year and made recommendations from that point of view? Have they also been to the public next? Have they made recommendations to you during the course of the year when they have met from last December until June or July?
They are, we meet...
Meaning the district-wide safety team?
Yeah, we meet monthly.
Pardon me?
We meet monthly.
Okay, very good. So some of the recommendations that were made, you discussed here this evening, are from them as well, correct?
Most definitely.
Okay. So the building-level emergency response plan, do the principals meet monthly with their team and then they make recommendations during the course of the year to have those recommendations ready for you when you are, this time of years is the time that you have to have them?
Yeah.
Is that what's going on?
Yeah, get recommendations through the entire year. Thank you for that. Yes, to answer your question, yes.
Okay. So those plans, those building-level emergency response plans, they're updated yearly. So if in fact there is an aggressive problem in a school, they have been sent to these law enforcement agencies. And are you creating the summaries? When's we discussed this last year? The summaries are supposed to be prepared and ready for the public.
Well, based on Altaris, we discussed this, summaries, the initial legislation is not, is not the same as it was when initially it came out in the eight-four.
Well, so...
So we don't, it doesn't necessarily require individual summaries. It does require us to discuss in the building level, I'm sorry, district level, that building, individual buildings create their own plans. It's confidential. Again, it's a very, it's just a very general summarization of what buildings need to do as best...
So the parents, the parents of children who live in the school district, okay, and their children are in the elementary schools and middle school and high school, they, are they confident and we can be reassured, they can be reassured, I shouldn't graduate, that there's a plan every year that is ready and available if in fact there was a incident in the school that they had to contact the authorities? Are those, are those plans updated every year and ready for, for that type of situation? Is that what I'm hearing?
Those plans are ready every year. Per New York State, we have to, we didn't want to, we have to have those in place when we get penalized. So it is done not only as a requirement, but obviously as a waiting. Safety is, school safety is such, on such a high plane of thought that we are on.
So you had recommendations in the thirty days this year because you had it up for thirty days, the district-wide.
Yes.
So how many, can you reassure us, how many comments did you have? In other words, were people looking for more safety measures within the school, metal detectors, more SROs, more breeders?
I believe this year we had seventeen.
Fourteen comments.
Fourteen comments this year as opposed to a hundred and thirty or something.
Four, hundred and four last year.
Hundred and four last year. It wasn't as bolsterous as last year with the comments, and most of the comments we received this year pertained to mental health, emotional wellness. It was a couple of comments about SROs, but nothing nearly as, as much as last year.
There was a summit in New York State with, you're aware of that.
I would, I couldn't make it.
Reason, are you? So, well, listen, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I see.
Hey, LaShawn, how are you? So a quick question. Now, we just wanted to, any more thought or discussion about SRO within the elementary school?
Yes.
Thirty, okay. That's a good thing. I like that. And the other thing, you were talking about, you guys do, your security team, you guys do drills in the school? You like randomly, you had a phone call, you got, boom, move. Do you do drills like that? Or errands drills? Is there on the...
I mean, again, New York State, Save, New York State School Safety Task Force, they, again, it all, it can sound like we do it just to check boxes, but even if, again, even if we get busy, we get agents that's coming, we still have to, we have to do these things and we don't want to, but we want to. We want to be better in the city. So yes, there are unannounced drills.
I mean, like on, like a live drill where you call, like years ago when we were keeping on, you had to go out, put your head down to all for your weapon.
Yes.
Do you do live drills? I guess that's what you...
Yes, live drills. As we were doing live lockdowns with fake shooters and so forth. We do live lockdowns, but we don't, currently, we don't use the SCTs while students are in school. That's been discussed, but there's been some negative, negative responses to that by students and so forth, so we got to try to be careful with that. But we do, do our, when a school's empty, ESU come in and run drills for this one.
And my last question, like you just mentioned about, you know, exit here, exit there. Just a thought, I don't know if you have thought about it or do that. Say you say exit A at that door, does exit A, because you made it that exit A means they go to G and they know A is really G. Follow what I'm saying?
Very.
You know, if you're saying one thing, somebody just maybe identifies that as A and they know it, but they're really going to G.
One of the things a lot of schools do is they create cargo fire.
Okay.
And normally everyone's evacuation routes are posted on, so pull the bell, put the cargo fire somewhere where they normally are used to going and they now they have to fly, consider the secondary.
It's a requirement, actually.
Some schools do it, some haven't. We, again, with Altaris, this is what we're doing. We're trying to step, we're trying to bring up things up, so we look forward to doing that issue, especially in legislation.
I mean, you involve directors like Chief, Chief, Sheriff.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, quick, wow. I know after the attack in the high school, they were doing a lot of focus groups with students. Did any of that feedback from the focus group, like, follow up to the safety team?
That was at, that was at two of the focus groups. A lot of our security and monitors hover around the school and they'll step in and see and so forth. The focus groups were phenomenal. The monitor was out of, some of them, we got from the student supplies, that's how they felt about the school and what they wanted, how they wanted us to go forward with that thing, but I won't speak on it here exactly. But I was shocked that what they want is what they don't want. But yes, to get feedback from students, and it's new to get feedback from students, I don't really have to get that, like, very much push, want to know how they, you know, it's just...
Are there, is there going to be public comment or should we just ask questions now?
Public comment. I'm assuming public comment is they dig a...
There is a public comment coming out.
This is a public hearing on the building safety, on the district safety plan.
So will we public comment after?
Yes, hopefully, or in the agenda, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Jassy, any questions?
I actually, I'm probably misunderstood. I'm wondering how well will the technology, how soon can we implement that as part of the safety plan because of the texting systems, you know, so we kind of have to get in with the tech, the new technology and maybe partner up with the local colleges and law enforcement that will notify parents and notify the student because that's where they're going to really get the information, you know, what's going on. So how are we planning to use that new technology to educate, to inform, and also to keep all of us somewhat safe? Because as parents, well, here later on, if there was an incident at the school, it was like, what did you do? So in order to help to reinforce that, how do we get notified using the new technology?
There are a number, there's a texting system, text blasts are a normal thing at this point. Blackboard is something that they use with their schools. They've done some of the school tech, yeah, yeah.
No one's really using the blackboards in the team, right? So the more effective, you know, source of resources to really relay that information in real time, I think that's what we wanted to know. For our safety, like I'm at work and I'm hearing something, it's like, I want to know if you needed me.
This is what we can look at. Make sure it's a little quicker.
Yeah. I'm just, I just, to that, to that point, I'm very familiar with that, I've used it. You, if you have that log in there, I don't, everybody's in there, I can assure you, hit that button, within twenty seconds, everybody in that has that, that incident. I was, when I first used it, I was shocked. And I was getting called back right away. I was very shocked. It's very...
So I think that's something with the public in place, TV, that's kind of relevant and that'll kind of really help us get more ideas.
I have one more to ask, LaShawn. At several meetings prior, there was a discussion by our superintendent, Dr. Medina, and I believe Ms. Collins mentioned it at one of your candidate sites. Has anyone gone or been to you that was wanting to visit other schools for metal detectors to see what they, has that occurred?
Yes. visited Newburgh, Middletown, primarily those two schools so far.
When you're coming here, are we still going to be searching the kids' bags or are you thinking about a different system now? you thinking about the different system now?
Um, we're discussing that? Then, I guess transparent, I'm leaning towards yes when it comes to at least continuing the bag searches. It's still something I think we've exactly finalized, like, so I don't want to say yes or no to that. I guess if we were transparent, we'd be able to, this is us about the bag checks, it seems to, we like the bag checks. Surprising as well, they said we like the bag checks. I, I think that's partly because they have, they first come to school, they see an adult, they talk, and they make sure when they're doing this, you know, we don't want to make somebody feel like we're making it positive. So you're making banter, conversations, saying, hi, doing hey, we got a question. I think that, and that helps the only students, but also helps the adults actually start the day with a smile and a positive conversation, the music playing, at least my station, I have the music playing, it turns out to be a little jokey fun there, but it really ended up being something, a positive piece, not as late as we thought it would turn out. That's the thing we're surprised about.
But as far as delaying the actual free practice that's now available for all and delaying some instruction as it was in the past, are you thinking about convincing that somehow or making sure that everything's done smoothly?
Yeah, of course. That's, that's one of these, why we visited Newburgh and Middletown to see how they run theirs and how quickly they get in, how quickly they get out. We got really good towards the end of the school year at getting everybody in at a time. And again, once the kids, once they bought in, kept fine with it, they work. They come in their bags already ready and open for us to check, so it was really fast process towards the end.
Any other questions on the plan?
Sorry.
Okay.
How long could it take to do that? You know, like high school?
It was, actually, it went pretty smooth mainly because the staff, we didn't realize how many staff, I mean, initially we focused on having security monitors assisting with these bag searches, but teachers showed up and secretaries were showing up and, I wouldn't call it a party, but it turned into this social event, it seemed like a morning, a safety social event, I can say that.
An improved relationship.
It was about a relationship.
All about a relationship.
All about.
So like, if you get the following, who in class, the rest of the students are inside of the common participate that we need to promote more changes?
I'm not mad at that. We're allowed to discuss this, I'm not mad at that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Our next agenda item is approval of minutes. We have three meetings to approve the minutes for. So if we begin, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 29th special meeting.
Sub move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting those minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. The next minutes are from the July 12th reorganizational meeting.
Sub move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. And the third minutes are from the special meeting on July 31st.
Sub move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We move to the time for public comment. I do have a statement that I would like to read before we begin. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our meeting. Thank you for showing your interest in the school district. We are about to enter the portion of the meeting where we welcome public comments. Although state law does not require that we hold a public comment period, we feel it is crucial that we hear from our community about their concerns. The board is here to listen. Because we do not take your, because we do take your concerns seriously, we want to have time to process and research issues. Your concerns and questions may be addressed at a future meeting of the board, or you may be contacted by the appropriate staff member or administrator. If you have prepared a written statement and do not have the opportunity to present it, please leave it with the clerk of the board, who will see that the trustees receive it. Please note that state and federal privacy laws and collective bargaining agreements prevent us from discussing certain topics in this venue. The guidelines are posted on the boardroom wall. Thank you for your adherence to the rules, your interest in the district, and if we can remember to be respectful of everyone in the room as we speak. Thank you.
Mr. Herb Lamb?
Good evening, I'm Herb Lamb, former KCSD board member. First, I'd like to thank Kingston City School District community for their support and entrusting your children's education with me. Now, for the reason of my departure from the board, let me introduce the current board of education members. Sitting in the room, on the board, is a former president who has never once denied accusations made by a former board member. If he accused me, the first thing I would have said, you are crazy and you better have proof. It's because I do not, or I did not do it. I too received a letter and now have a lab statement that identifies all three envelopes are identical, brand, color, font, font size, color of font. One envelope is missing the return address. Put on top of each other's replacement is less than one thirty-second of an inch. And the same weakness in the lowercase e shows in all three. The entire board, with the exception of Dr. Fitzgerald, was aware of these accusations, yet one board member nominated the former president, knowing the lack of ethics and the strong-arming of members to vote his way in the future. Three members, and he voted for him to be president again. Then on Monday, I get a phone call from three members, all stating the same thing. I have decided that we need a complete reset. Now, is that the mode, people would say, clean slate, reboot, restart, but reset? I recorded these conversations and they all are almost verbatim till I hung up on one. So, a meeting was run by phone to, for a phone vote, was basically taken, and the decision was made. Mrs. Bruner, I can attest to the results of what I told her they would be on Tuesday. I ran, I ran an idea of transparency, while now seeing the lack of ethics, integrity, and plain morality, I cannot be part of this board because I don't ask, or I don't lack those characteristics. My parents raised me correctly. Any administrator I ever worked for will tell you, it's impossible for me to lie, and I will tell them the truth. I really question how six of you can sit on the board, which influences children. My students, the parents of students, and well, my voting history, I'm going to finish.
No, I'm sorry.
On the board will tell you, I'm about students. Dr. Collins tried to get this loud after the last meeting.
We are adjourned.
All right? It will be in the paper tomorrow.
If you'd like to leave a copy, you may.
You should be, yeah, you should be ashamed of yourself because that is illegal.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too.
Good. Thank you.
And I have put the complaint in with Commissioner of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. Our next, is Reverend Childs still here? I believe he had to leave. Daniel Lewis?
We have to call the, yep.
Sorry, Mr. Lewis, one moment.
The meeting is back to order. Seven fifty.
My name is Daniel Lewis. I'm not a good public speaker here, but I'm here and just to get my children and the children of the City of Kingston School District. Can you hear me or no?
It just needs to be in the.
Oh, gotcha. So my concern is, is I got a letter in the mail stating that my children live too close to Kingston Catholic School where they go to school, and they have to walk to school or be driven to school. We as working parents cannot do that. It's not physically possible. They picked them up last year. I spoke to the transportation department of the City of Kingston School District. Mrs. Boyd, she was very helpful and kind of gave me the rundown of how it works. I called the safety department stating the safety factors of the kids, of where they have to walk, and a seven-year-old and a ten-year-old shouldn't be able to walk to school. It's very dangerous. I did call Mr. Palladino's office, spoke to his secretary, and I was supposed to get a phone call back, which I never did. It's just a very dangerous situation for any children to have to walk to school at seven-years-old and ten-years-old. They walk through areas where it's known drug use, unquestionable people that sleep on the benches, and I as a working parent and my other half cannot take them to school. We can, we can provide daycare, drop them somewhere, but that's going to be out in the town of Ulster and make it even harder on us and the school district. So what I'm asking for is someone to help me to try to get my kids to Kingston Catholic. I have two kids that don't burden the school district by any means, so it's two less kids in the school district. I have nine properties I pay for in taxes in the City of Kingston School District, over fifty-some thousand dollars a year. And all's I ask for is transportation and safety of my children. That's all I care about. And the other children in the City of Kingston. That's all I can ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Carlomen Townsend, I apologize if I pronounced that wrong. Deborah Gilman Spicer?
No, I don't have a comment.
Okay. Andre Lewis? Sandra Moore? James Shaughnessy?
I'd like to congratulate the new officers of the school district. I sent each of you my summary of the Dietz intermunicipal agreement. We all know that in 2018, Steve Noble lied about needing to have full ownership to use DRI funds for the stadium. It is outrageous that the mayor would lie to the public and the school district to take away ownership of its major sports facility. Maybe he also lied about the need for full managerial control. I asked Dr. Palladino if he had had such, if he had seen such a document, but he didn't respond. I have foiled the city for it. I have a thirty-second clip from the February fifteenth board meeting. Which I.
Mr. Shaughnessy? Has any work started on these stadiums? Yes, maybe it'll still be available. I actually, I understand, I understand you asked that exact question, but I don't have today in our meeting, and there is, I spoke to the mayor on Friday, on Friday of last week, said their expectation is that all contracts will be signed in March and the first work will be starting in April first.
So that was four months ago or more. I didn't intend my question at that time to be a joke. Not only is the city untruthful about the DRI, it seems incompetent in executing the renovation project. It has been almost four years since the IMA was signed and no shovel was in the ground. The district vacated Dietz last November. Maybe nine months later, construction will begin. The district lost most of its spring twenty-three season and will lose its spring twenty-four season. It will probably lose two autumn seasons instead of one. Two years without its major sports facility. The great news, visitors will have composting toilets on their side of the stadium. Merriam-Webster says that composting toilets have been called outhouses since the fourteenth The IMA will automatically extend to 2029 unless you notify the city of your intent to terminate by August 31st. I urge you to do so, even if only to allow you to renegotiate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy.
Minister Parish Bowman? I believe you left as well. Jean Jacobs?
I'm fine.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Thank you.
Your name?
Lee Bombasudo. I'm a parent in the district. I want to thank Mr. Parker for such a comprehensive plan. Thank you. And I want to thank you all for continuing to prioritize the safety of all children in this school district. Again, my name is Lee Bombasudo. I'm the parent of a five-year-old in this district. And thank you for mentioning that there's going to be an update to the SRO's job description. As you all well know, the memorandum of understanding between the KCSD and the police department says, under state law, the SRO shall not serve as a school disciplinarian, as an enforcer of school regulations, or in place of school-based mental health providers. And the SRO shall not use police powers to address traditional school discipline issues. And yet, right now, the KPD is defunding the Kingston School District. Almost $400,000 is being spent each year on SROs. And that is leading to racial profiling and profiling and ongoing harassment, particularly of those most marginalized by racism and oppression. And so, we would really love to see this money go towards counselors and social workers and psychologists and teachers instead of hiring traffic guards through the police department. This could be money that's well going to the community. And I'm very glad to hear that there won't be additional threat assessment teams, very interested in knowing if those will include law enforcement, and going to keep my ears to the ground about that. And so really what we need from the school board is bravery and bold courage to stand up. Only one of you has stood up against this and made their voices known in this regard. And so just really urging you all to think about the safety and equity of every student in this district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Mary Claire Cranston. I have to admit, I had a very different speech prepared, particularly for you, Mrs. Anderson. I had you in high school. I've never felt so defeated after hearing Mr. Lamb's remarks. God, I hope they're not true. How are we to put the future of our kids in a group of people who are so busy playing political chess that they're not listening to the parents of the district? If anything good came out of what happened in the high school this past school year, it is that we are watching and we are paying attention. Mrs. Anderson, I pray to God that you are the person that you are in Coleman, patiently dealing with Tom and Tim as they called each other on their scientific calculators. Because we desperately need transparency, we need change, and we need every one of you to step up to the plate because we do not trust you at this point.
That takes us out of public comment and moves us into the superintendent's report. Dr. Palladino?
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Well, we will start our superintendent's report with a presentation from Jack Schumaker, who is the project manager for the Dietz stadium project.
Thank you, Dr. Palladino, for inviting me to make a presentation to your board. I did bring some copies of papers so that everyone can see what I'm speaking to at this For those that don't know me or haven't heard, I was recently hired a year and a half ago via the City of Kingston as project manager for Parks and Recreation. I've spent thirty-eight years in architecture here locally, the last ten of which of architectural project managers for major developments in the past year. This is my home. I've been here all my life, as have ten generations prior to me. My son. have 10 generations prior to me. My son's 11th generation and was a graduate of the school system, as I was. I am very excited to announce and to present these papers on our Deets Stadium Project. The contracts have all been executed. Notices to proceed have been presented. We have a start date now, which was Monday of this week. On Friday, the construction gates and fencing will start going up, and we will start the project. The contractors have all been aware and have signed on to contracts that give them a substantial completion deadline of August 30, 2024. We will do everything in our power to make sure that that happens. There may be, after August 30th, some minor finishing, some landscaping, so forth, but I will be pushing these contractors to have these buildings open and ready to be used by August 30th. The plan itself has developed substantially from what was first presented as a schematic plan two years ago, and because of that, costs have increased. This past month, I had to go back to the City Common Council and get approval for the additional expenditure of monies. Before doing that, I met with Dr. Pedalino, the athletic director, presented all the numbers, the facts, and figures as to why it increased. I'd like to briefly go over some of those figures tonight. The first drawing that you see in front of you is the new master site plan. I did highlight some new construction that will be happening on the site. There will be a gated ticket booth for all people entering into the stadium. There will be a much larger concession stand over by the grandstand. It will be an open-air concession stand with utilities and hookups for four food trucks. There'll be a smaller version of that on the visitor's side as well for one food truck, which will also have two full functioning bathrooms in that building. We have eliminated the composting toilets from the project. We also added to the project additional storage for all of the school equipment. There will now be a 100-foot building behind the visitor's side bleachers for access to the track and field equipment on the now-new track and field green. Those that are familiar with the stadium, the back hill where the basketball court is located and the road swings around towards Forsyth, that hill is being cut down to bring it to the same level as the stadium and expanding the track and field practice and activities. There will now be javelin throw, discus, shot put, all being located right at the stadium for all the track and field events. The second drawing that you'll see is the actual landscaping plan. It's one of my favorite parts of the drawings. There are 120-plus new trees being located on the facility. This will now have a park-like setting. It will be a showcase for the school and for the city, and we are very proud of what we're being able to do. You'll see in that plan the flow of parking, where the track is located, the lines of trees. It's going to be a whole new facility. The team that put it together, CPL engineering architects and planners, spent a great deal of time. They worked with me very closely, and we are very proud to present this project. The second, the next sheet that I have in my package is a review of the costs and the budget. Two years ago, when it was a schematic design and the pool project had already completed, phases 1, A, B, and C, which was to redo the outside of the pool house, redo the pool, and add the splash pad, the remaining cost of construction inspections and engineering at that time was estimated at $15,566,000 on the schematic plan. There was remaining, there was an uptick added to it at that time because of COVID and the supply prices were going up drastically, very quickly, so we put a 20% overage into that, which brought the total project budget at that time, two years ago, $19,570,000. We then proceeded into design development and went from schematic plans into actual drawings. Eight months later, April of '22, we relooked at the budget, relooked at the numbers to make sure we were staying on track, and after that review, the total project budget was $19,518,000. We were doing our job and we were diligent in keeping the scope within the amount that was estimated. Then, in the following August, 8/30 of '22, the construction documents were at 30% complete. We presented them, we reviewed them, we made sure we were going in the right track, and we relooked at the budget. It did creep on the cost of construction to $16,863,000. Three months later, in November of '22, the construction documents were then 60% complete, and we did another review. Here, we saw a substantial increase. The cost of construction then went up to $19,232,000. I will review some of the items that got added during that time between the 30 and the 60% construction documents. The stadium lighting poles have been determined to be unstable for all new lighting to be put on them, so we had to plan on removing all four of those major poles and putting all new in at a cost of about $275,000. The Broadway streetscape has got all these new beautiful light poles, benches, receptacles. We've decided to continue that same streetscape into the stadium to become a citywide design standard. That was an additional $75,000. The grandstand is now being split in half by creating an access path into the locker rooms from the 50-yard yard line. Because of this, we had to relook at how to have ADA compliant access to the grandstand. We've increased it. There is now going to be ADA ramps at both ends of the grandstand, and we've increased the number of ADA seating that will be in front of the grandstand elevated at the same level. That came at an additional $300,000. The site construction is now being included with green infrastructure. The details of that green infrastructure is similar to what was used at the Cornell Street parking lot by Little Italy. It's a skate, exciting project. We did get grant money to proceed with this, but it does have an additional detail cost of $756,000. We upgraded the HVAC for the entire facility, for the grandstand specifically, and we updated all of the electric. It will be all-new electric underground on the property. That was an additional $440,000. We extended the entrance and sidewalk area at the gated ticket booth so that when people are congregating, coming in and going out, they have a much larger area and are not crowded or funneled. That was an additional $132,000. The visitor's side concession and toilet building, which we added to the scope of the project, is coming in an additional $400,000. And then, the track and field storage building was an additional $250,000. So by adding to the scope, we added to the project an additional $2,628,600. That ended up being a total project add-on with additional engineering services and inspections of a $3,335,202 increase, which took place between that 30 and 60% completion of the documents. Then, January of this year, we hit 90% complete on the documents. We reevaluated again and looked at the budget and the numbers, and our cost of construction was leveling off at $20,400,000. At 100% completion, bid documents were done and put out onto the street. We reevaluated, looked at the budget, looked at the engineering services, looked at the estimated cost of construction of $20,400, and added a contingency fund to be covered for anything that might be found while we're under construction, which brought our new total project budget, which included all of the pool renovations and everything that had already been completed, to $24,700,000. We had been bonded and approved by the city council for $18,700, which meant I was looking at a $6 million deficit in funding sources. When the bids finally did come in and I had the actual true numbers of what the contractors are charging, the cost of construction went to $21,567,000. The total budget of the project, all in with all construction, all inspections, all engineering, and the finished pool project, is now at $26 million. And the common council of the City of Kingston approved the additional funding, and that is now our budget. Within that $26 million, I have a total allowance for contingencies of just under $1 million, $981,000. If that doesn't get used, that gets returned. It will not be spent. When I finished the pool project, we had the same type of situation, and I ended up getting money back from every one of the contractors by using that process. It's going to be exciting. As the project manager for the City of Kingston, I will be overseeing the project daily. We have added to the scope of the architectural and engineering firm. They will have a resident project representative onsite through the entire contract construction process. So between him and myself and the lead from each of the 10 contractors that are going to be on the project, we will manage it in-house, and we are saving money by not having to hire a third-party construction management team. We are doing everything in our power to make this a beautiful project, which we hope to be done on time and under that contingency. I thank you very much for allowing me to make this presentation. The last document that you'll see for your review are the actual bid numbers that came in from the 16 bidders on the project and how close their numbers were. I was very happy to see that it was a fair and tight bid process, which to me says that the drawings and the construction documents that have been presented are solid, and we are going to be able to move through with this as fast and as aggressively as we can. Is there any questions?
Well, first, I think you must be very brave to come here today, because, as you know, there's a lot of frustration surrounding this project. I'm sure you have felt it. And now to see the costs ballooning is, of course, of concern. Some things you have control over, excuse me, but in terms of my responsibility on this board, I need to be convinced that there has been good reasons why it hasn't, I mean, we could have had the stadium for a year, but we didn't. And that has created a lot of frustration, and, excuse me, whatever she has. So I think to go forward, we really need to be assured that there will be no more complaints. There will be no more excuses, and we can depend, and we can reflect to the community that we can depend on. Go ahead, both, correct.
One of my goals whenever I work on projects like these is to have the dominos all lined up. I've spent that time where we didn't move lining up the dominos, because we want to start it and complete it in a very quick fashion. So when they got their notices to proceed that the job is now ready to run on Monday and they're boots on the ground on Friday, we are ready to go. All the submittals that have been coming in from the contractors for all the materials have already been reviewed by the architects. We are full steam ahead at this point.
That's wonderful to hear. I think what would help is some acknowledgement of what happened before and how unfortunate it was, but we kept being cheerleaders, and it's hard to continue to feel that way. I'm just an honest, real person, but I'm very hopeful that if this is anything that is helpful.
I'll be doing my best.
I can tell.
Yes.
I noticed the new grandstand ramps. You said there would be one on the weekend. What about the other side, the visitor's side? Will there be any ramps at all?
There's a ramp to those bleachers now.
Okay, so we're not doing anything more with them?
Those bleachers that are there on the visitor's are remaining.
Oh, okay.
And the other thing, because of the ADA, with the ramps coming down both sides of the grandstand, the ladies' restroom now, the much larger ladies' toilet, is at the far Forsyth Park end of the grandstand, to the back. So we have now done all the necessary ramping and retaining so that users of the facilities can get around to that bathroom without having to go all the way around and back up. The whole property will now be ADA compliant. All the sidewalks will be at the correct pitch, and all the roadways and walkways will all be ADA compliant entirely on the whole site.
Mark.
Is this being done through a project labor agreement?
Excuse me?
A project labor agreement?
Yes, there is a project labor agreement that was negotiated. All of the contractors have assented and signed on to it.
All right. And are you looking at doing, I mean, because August 30th pushes right up against when we need to be in there in reality. So are you looking at things like four-day work weeks, like four-10s with the ability to have them work five days?
That was the purpose of the project labor agreement. We can't, regular wages, we can't negotiate, but anything beyond shift, off shifts are now been negotiated to a savings. And the study that was done said, because of our aggressive schedule, we will probably save close to 5% of the cost of construction, cost of labor because of the PLA.
Okay. And you talked about $980,000 in allowances. There's an additional $450,000 contingency outside of the contracts. That seems reasonable. I mean, that's pretty low.
That's, it's because the contracts are so tight and so complete, that money was there to sort of balance off the budget and to give us something, you know, if I've got to put some signage up that I didn't plan on and so forth, I've got some small amount of money to work.
All right. I'm sorry, I just have one more. So the 756 with the green infrastructure, you're saying that's net of like EFC, Environmental Facilities Corporation, any other grants that you've gotten, or there may be grants still out there that you're going to see that those costs be lower?
Correct. We are still, our grads management team at the City of Kingston is still aggressively looking for additional grant monies that they can apply to to offset the cost of this project.
And with the green infrastructure, you were saying it's the same as Cornell, so does that mean like permeable parking lot?
Yep.
Who has the responsibility to plow the parking lot at Deets, the city?
The city.
Okay.
And with that permeable parking areas, it will also have to be annually maintained with a sweeper and vacuum system to keep it permeable, and that will all be on Parks and Rec staff.
Okay.
Will trailways also be using that again?
Trailways will probably not be using Trailways will probably not be using it. As you can see from the maps, the configuration of those parking lots and the big bus turnarounds and so forth, we do not see overnight, long-term parking happening on the property. We have... We are proposing to them an alternate location within the city.
Ross?
So I would echo Mrs. Jordan's sentiments that you are brave to come in front of us, because it has indeed been very frustrating. And I appreciate this rundown. It's quite thorough, but it's so frustrating to see these dates. I mean, you know, January of twenty twenty-three, ninety percent complete, and in March of twenty twenty-three, we... I mean, that's four months after we were told this project would begin, and they're still adding things, I mean, millions of dollars. I don't like why the ADA wasn't figured out before then. And, you know, so here we are. I mean, as recently as May, we were told, oh, the project, it's going to start next week, as recently as May. So it's August. I believe you when you say we're starting Friday, we will be paying attention. Obviously, there was an article in the paper that said it was going to take fourteen to sixteen months to complete. So I just don't...
As I...
Give me a reason to trust...
Yep. So as I said, substantial completion is scheduled. We are pushing the contractors to have the buildings ready to be used, substantial completion, August thirtieth. It will probably take another two to three months to close out the project with all of the grant money, not construction, but the grant money and so forth. So the entire project will take fourteen to sixteen months from what started this week.
Okay. So you understand why it's a little bit hard to trust, just because we...
Absolutely.
I mean, we were told, you know, fall season ends, everyone out, it's starting. And here we are, eight months more, you know, it's August, and we're just starting now.
I can only hope that at the end of the project, I'll be able to stand here and say, I got it done for you.
So, yes, well, so, you know, I don't, you know, I guess we don't have to rehash by the delay, although, you know, I, of course, would like to know that. But when you say August thirtieth, substantial completion, so that means our kids are using that field. We're allowed to have games there with spectators. The bathrooms are done.
Yep.
And so people can use them. The changing rooms are completely finished.
Yep.
It's only the stuff around the edges that you're saying, you know, parking lots are done, everything's done.
Yep.
So that we're going to be completely able...
I anticipate that the massive amount of landscaping, which is the last thing that's going in, may go past that August thirtieth date.
But that's not going to interrupt football practice or band practice or field hockey games.
Correct.
You're one hundred percent.
That's the push.
All right. This is, it's been extraordinarily frustrating. And it's, you know, I'm glad we're getting started. It looks like a beautiful plan. I mean, it's way over budget. It's way over what we initially thought it would be, is what I should say. And it's... It's been really frustrating.
I feel it.
I'm sure you do. Thank you. I mean, I'm just going to sort of piggyback on that. I wonder if there's a way to give a more realistic sort of update as we're going along as opposed to we wait till, you know, that long. I know, I think we're getting regular updates on this. But just that we're staying on track, like, updates that we are actually staying on track in the progress kind of reports would be helpful. I mean, I know they happen, but it would be great if they're happening with reports of success. And if there are substantial delays that are coming up, the reasons for them, because I think it's very difficult to absorb it without having the reasons why the delays were happening, is what everyone thinks.
There will be weekly coordination, construction meetings with all of the contractors in the room at the same time throughout the entire process. There will be a monthly update of the schedule as to where we're at and what we're doing. So if there are any changes to that schedule, I will be in contact with the school team, Dr. Pedolino, the AG, and Dylan, who's also now been coming up to the project and getting on track as well.
I think that's great, that just coming from a leadership project management kind of background that, like, I know there's a plan and a schedule, like, the communication part of it back to the board and to Dr. Pedolino as part, I think that would really help.
And while this isn't Jack's, this isn't... I have been involved in those meetings as opposed to Dylan, but this isn't in your realm. But in our agreement, there is an agreement that a member of the board can be part of the Parks and Rec Commission, which really is part of this project. So we used to have Mr....
Michael.
Thank you. Mr. Michael used to be that. So we can, we don't have to have this discussion now, but I think as a board, maybe we look at committee assignments coming up. Maybe we want to assign one member of the board to tag along with me on those updates.
And I think we should offer an open invitation to come back and be at any of these board meetings whenever there's a timely update.
Absolutely.
This is fun, isn't it?
I would be glad to be here.
Could you make the font a little bigger?
Yes. Kingston is my home, and I am just so excited to be involved with this project as a community member and as a family member, and I'm going to do everything I can in my power. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Supermaker.
Okay, just a couple of quick things in the superintendent's report. To let you know, this summer school is pretty much wrapping up. Our summer nine ended on July twenty-eighth. Our middle school, K two-three, ended on August fourth. KHS ends on the eighteenth, the sixteenth, and seventeenth, the Regent's exams. I've already told you many times how pleased we were with the tremendous attendance at all of our programs with more than a thousand students on the campuses in our four programs, which is the most we've ever had since starting summer schools. So we're really excited about that and how that worked out. So we're looking at the results, looking at the outcomes from that, and I will have report, the full reports like I give every year from principals of the middle, of the summer schools at our next meeting. Summer school graduation, I think, summer school graduation is the twenty-eighth at 5:00 PM at Wendell Sheer Auditorium at Kingston High School, and you have a question?
It was about that.
Oh, okay.
So how many graduates will we have at that?
You want to answer that, Ms. Bondo?
Possibly. We're looking at four possibilities.
Okay. And some of that dependent on Regents?
Some of that is dependent on several things, yes.
And how many, how many were candidates? How many kind of went through the program over the summer?
There were five.
There were five?
Possible candidates.
Okay.
So that's just some quick summer school things. Other things that have gone around the district, I mean, the main things that we're working on right now through summer, outside of summer school and prepping to start school are capital projects, and there's a lot of stuff going on. Our main air conditioning, basically, we're basically done, the air conditioning at Kingston High School. Final connections are being put together, pipe enclosures, connections to the attics, attic pieces are ongoing, patching ceilings, taking care of floors, those kind of things. But we expect this to be completely finished within the next week or so. Dylan, would you say that's right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Our energy performance contract is underway. Graves boilers are in place, and connection is still ongoing. Our lighting retrofits continue at Bailey and Kingston High School, and day automation is continuing to work on preparation for the complete switch over our controls. So we're moving forward that. We also think that will be done and ready by the time school starts. Our smart schools bond is still in process. I'll have more with that on the next meeting. We have a couple of issues that we're working out, but nothing that's, nothing fatal. Playgrounds have been a frustration, so we have some progress, but not the progress we would like. I do have a, we do, we did receive a calendar with a schedule with an estimate of everything being done by the twenty-fifth of this month. I'm not going to lie and say I have a lot of confidence in that, so I don't think Dylan has a lot of confidence in that either. We've been pushing on the contractor, pushing on the playground provider, playground manufacturer, but we haven't been having great deals of success. We're going to work a little more this week before we have to look at what are the levers we have to pull to make things happen.
Are there any complete at all?
None are complete at this point.
And just to clarify, construction can't happen when, once school starts, right?
It can. I mean, generally, generally, if it's manned properly, the, question, the installation of the playground is about a seven-day project, so manned properly. So, you know, we think that if they had double, if they have their, if they double up teams like they said they're going to do, they could do multiple schools over those seven days and be done by the twenty-fifth, but they have to man the project. So if we were to open school, we could still, in a very short period of time, close off that area, obviously have to do alternate recess or something and have that, have the playground put in. That's if they're doing it properly. So we're, we're working on it. It's been, it's been frustrating, but we're doing our best to make it up.
Do they have a project management plan on that? I mean, because if you're not keeping up with, I mean, it's just the same concept. If you're not keeping up with a plan, like, you have deadlines for certain things and communicating with teams and meeting this and meeting that. I mean, they're pretty detailed kind of things when you're doing these projects. So if we're not, if they're not meeting deadlines or having our, I guess in my head, I'm just trying to think of the transparency of the project actual plan, whether it's a full project plan that's skilled or just a small, not small, but the playground project, which is very different. I don't, I like, it's just hard with people not meeting deadlines repeatedly. I don't know how we deal with that, but I just...
Well, again, we deal with it, a lot of our issues are, we deal with it, we pull the contract, then what? So we have a lot of other, so we have to, we have to, again, continue to push. Hopefully, they'll man up. We've had this experience before. Some of you probably remember George Washington, maybe eight years ago, when Friday before Labor Day, the school was enclosed, ready, I thought I wasn't going to be able to open, and all of a sudden it was ready on Tuesday. So we're, again, Dylan's working diligently to get everyone on board and up to speed, and we're going to continue to, again, continue to push until we have to pull a lever like Athletic fields, probably have all seen all the updates we've been doing. Again, Tom Irwin advisors in the district again last week, they continue to monitor the grass, monitor the growth, aerate in certain areas. But one thing that kind of came out was they're not going to overseed and aerate the outfield of Gruner right now, because it's got so many weeds. They want it to grow out, take care of the weeds, then fertilize and herbalize or whatever we're calling it, herbicides on there. So it looks beautiful and green, but it's basically clover and weeds right now up there. But we're really moving along nicely. You'll see on this, along with not only the work that they're doing in the fields itself, we also have brought on a, another assistant athletic director. It's in the teacher's contract. We have two assistant athletic directors who are really teachers, just who do an assignment for us. Ronnie Keldner's coming on. He works right at Miller. He's going to help us manage the game days, making sure the scoreboard's where they're supposed to be, the water's where it's supposed to be, making sure the sound systems, lights, and all those things are where they are supposed to be working, helping, working with our grounds guys to make sure that everything's the way it's supposed to be, fields aligned properly, et cetera. So Ronnie will be helping us with that again. He's right at Miller, so it's perfect for him to be able to step up.
When will he be doing that? During the school day?
No, no. He has one period free. He'll be in one period free and then does the after-school. Yeah. So we're, so we're adding that, that kind of extra thing there to make sure that we provide the best experience we can behind Miller. We have been happy with the progress of the grounds. I think they've given us a lot of good advice. Our guys are really doing everything they're told to do. Our next step is to look at what we're doing. As the season goes on, we've created game-only fields, so to eliminate that pounding that the fields were taken. So, again, priority is going to be varsity sports and game time. And that's, that's what it's going to be. So our varsity field hockey, our varsity soccer teams, they're going to play on our, on our, you know, competition-only fields most of the time. That's their, those are their fields. I met with our athletic trainer, Rachel Meyer, two days ago, asked her what we needed. She gave us Mr. Reinhardt and I a list. We're providing that. Also, asked her for ongoing feedback. Are we seeing a lot of ankles? Are we seeing a lot of knees? Are we seeing a lot of issues with injuries? And is there a reason for that? Told her, we wanted her to tell us that, so we could make any kind of changes we had to at that point. So we're trying to dot every eye and cross every tay. Is it the, is it the experience of having Deets Stadium? No, it's not. It's just not. But we're, I think we made a lot of improvements. Removed some of the old fencing we did last year. We moved more this year, created better situations for water toward the fields, which was lacking last year, doing some other improvements on Gruner, which should happen over the next few, next week or so, just around aesthetics around the field.
What field is the game, what's the game field?
Well, Field Five is really the field that we're looking at as game field, so it means nothing, right?
Right.
Behind, right between Miller and Gruner, there's that one field there.
Okay, so that will be kind of field hockey, soccer, varsity fields.
Boys and girls soccer and field hockey, varsity games only.
And what about varsity football? Where are they?
Varsity football will be practicing behind the fieldhouse.
Behind the fieldhouse. So, okay, so what about band?
Band is practicing where they always have, over by exit.
But every Sunday night?
Crossby.
Crossby.
Every Sunday, the band used to go to Deets, because they need that lined field in order to have the, you know, you march on a football field.
I don't know. I want to give you an answer to that exactly. I know that we've worked with the music department, and I think we're all set, but let me get, let me get, I'll email everyone that answers that question. But I haven't heard anything that we were having issues with that, so let me find out.
Okay, thank you.
And we actually, working, Mr. Reinhardt actually working with Mr. Keldner, found a couple of fields that we weren't using, that we are now starting to groom and get ready. You know, I think there's, it has to be the understanding that, like I said it several times, that our priority for those game fields is going to be our varsity athletes for games. So that's one of the reasons we had some of the problems we have, the continuous pounding. We're not going to play, we're not going to play, you know, modified football on the varsity field hockey game field. It's not going to happen.
Right.
That's just, it's not, not. So those are, those are kind of the strategies we're using to preserve the fields and make sure our students have good, safe fields to play on.
And do we have enough field space for all those other teams to have a place to play?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, some of them aren't optimal, but that's, again, our priority is varsity game day.
Mark?
So jumping back to Gruner, you said we're not going to oversee and aerate right now. We want to do the herbicide and kill the weeds.
Right.
So then it's like during school at some point, like, we're going to do that before the baseball season, though?
Yes. We'll probably do it right at the end of the fall season.
Okay. And that won't be affected by weather, like?
Shouldn't be, according to what we're being told by the consultants.
Okay. All right.
That concludes the superintendent's report, Mrs. Anderson.
Okay. That moves us into the consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that board members would like to have pulled? Kathy?
Boe oh-eight and Boe ten.
Twenty twenty-three, Po nine.
Po nine? Any others? Okay. Can, I will need a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of Boe oh-eight and Boe ten and Po nine.
So...
Any discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? So the consent agenda passes unless those three items. So I think we'll go to Po nine. We need a motion to approve the, Po nine.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, so I pulled this because I'm just curious. Some people have many years' experience and it started on step one. How is that determined?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find you.
I don't know. I think it's the, it's the very, the very first one, first professional, the P.
Well, just in general, I guess...
Does everybody start on step one?
Does everyone start on step one? It depends. I mean, for example, the ESP contract is very, very scripted about who starts on what step. So if you, if I'm, if I'm a new teaching assistant in ESP, I can only be given one year of credit for every two years of experience if I came from, let's say I came from Rondau and I was a certified tutor. So I'd be, the highest I could start on step two, and that's period, no matter how much, the highest we can bring someone into step two, even if they had ten years' experience in the ESP contract, is step two. So ESP is very, like I said, scripted as to what can be, what step people can start on.
But if someone comes from another...
Oh, and let me also add, also in the ESP contract, it states that if there's any break in service, they go all the way back.
Okay.
So if you were a teacher's assistant in Kingston City School, there's... So if you were a teacher's assistant in Kingston City School, they shared for 10 years and you took two years off and came back, under their contract, I have to start them at. Under that contract, I have to start them at step one.
Okay, so if a person taught in a, in a school, for instance, but didn't have to be certified?
We don't give credit for non-certified. As far as teachers are concerned, we don't give credit for non-certified service.
So we, they're going to be able to start on a higher step?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on Po 9? Can I have, we already, we already moved and seconded, so all in favor of passing Po 9?
Aye.
Any opposed? And so that carries. Now we go to Boe 8. I need a motion to address Boe 8. That's the school comprehensive education plans, I believe. Discussion. Kathy?
So I, I pulled this because I first have a question and then sort of follow up with comments. So the question is, my understanding, Dr. Farnolino, is that both Miller and JFK, CSI schools received funds to hold, to incorporate community into developing their set plans? So I.
All, all of our schools, except if they're.
The CSI and CSI?
CSI, yes, yes.
Okay. So I was pretty disappointed to see that the set plan by Miller has no evidence of any sort of community gathering.
They have until end of August of this year to do that, to do that presentation, or that, that.
But we would be approving a plan, though, that no one has participated in developing.
Well, as we've said before, these plans are, these plans, while they have to be submitted, they're not static. We can continue to change them throughout the year. So each, each time we do something different or something new comes into the plan, that can be changed at any time during the school year within the set process. So for example, George Washington is another one. They're doing their, they're doing theirs on the 24th of, 24th of August. Their community, you know, using that funding for the community input. And I know that there's a plan for a similar event coming up towards the end of August at Miller.
So then, August 30th, so we would then expect to see a set plan that has something new and different that would reflect the input from community members?
Right. And you could expect to see possible changes later in the year as the BLT meets throughout the year.
So that's something that potentially we turn toward TNL or something to follow up on?
Yeah, I think we could give those updates at TNL. Definitely a good place for it.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Do we approve the update? Or they just get approved once a year?
They just get approved once a year.
Yeah, so, okay, so August 30th. And has that, have either the GW or the Miller ones been made public?
I know the GW, we approved the flyer just last week in English and Spanish, so it should have been out by now.
Okay. But Miller, this is now two and a half weeks, you know, we're.
Yeah, that'll go out this week, I think.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Is there a reason, I'm sorry, is there a reason why we have to approve or do this before our next meeting?
It has to be in the state, I mean, like, yeah.
Before our next meeting?
Yes. We're actually late at this point. And it's only our TSI schools, our CSI school, I mean, CSI schools, our TSI schools do not have to go, be approved by the board.
Okay, sorry, I was, I heard, okay, August 30th.
All in favor of Boe 8? Any opposed? The resolution passes. And now a, a motion for Boe 10. Discussion.
So I pulled the school calendar because I'm curious if you could tell us a little bit about the, the new addition of late start days that we've never seen before?
Yeah, so we are looking for, obviously, contractually, we only have so much time with, with our faculty and staff. With the number of initiatives that we have this year, mostly looking at our, our I-ready curriculum implementation. Our teachers need training in those areas. We are using this kind of as being a way to get a couple of hours in the morning four times during this year to have our I-ready people in, in-house and have our teachers work with them to first start the training and then make adjustments as we go through the, through the year. So we looked at one in September, one in January, one in April, so three, we have three, and one in April. So we're, again, just trying to steal a little bit of time to get the professional development into the teachers that need it.
So I guess two, a couple of follow-up questions. So one is, is there a reason we couldn't do it in one day?
I don't, I don't lose an attendance day. We don't lose, we don't lose an attendance day if we use the two-hour delay, if we do it all in one day. And also because it's different, different modules throughout the year. So I couldn't do all of it in one year because it's, it's kind of, it's scheduled out, you know, and it's, it builds upon itself.
Okay, because this is, it's really hard for families. I think we struggle on school days, but at least then sometimes there's reasons why parents too can't get to work or whatever. But so I'm just trying to think through all the sides of this so that, so if it's really focused on I-ready, what are the high school teachers doing? Is that also PD time then?
That is also PD time.
It's just not?
So we still have, we still have other, other initiatives that need to happen at the high school.
And is there any, have we reached out to any partners in our elementary schools to help with childcare or anything in those?
We have not yet. We have not yet, but we will.
Can we do that? I think that would be helpful if they talked to my TA and all of our partners.
Yeah, that's actually a great idea. If maybe parents, if you could drop your kid off and we could have childcare in those, in the schools in the, in the morning.
Yeah, we could, we'll, we'll look at what we can do.
Two-hour delay is hard.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, yeah, it's too, I, you know, there's this tension. It's too bad that kids have to lose an instructional day essentially for, for this professional development. I appreciate that it needs to happen and completely support that. It's just too bad that those two things are in tension with each other.
Yeah, I, you know, there's, there's only so many hours, there are only so many contractual days I have with, with our teachers. There's a number of instructional days that I have to have with our students. And then we also are, we, we play the game around aid, state aid, around our, our making sure we hit those 180 days. So it's a, it's, it's, that's, when we need real, you know, heavy-duty professional development in, in big change areas, we got it, we have to get creative. While we have a certain number of superintendents, conference days, you know, we have to look at also, we, the, the change, the change in the mandated trainings alone for our teachers this year and our teachers assistants, and everyone who works in the district, including everyone who sits around this table, by the way, is now it's about three hours. So they've added the EdLaw 2D, they've added the Code of COVID training. It used to be, it used to be, you know, all we did was a couple of different little things, you know, write to know and, and bloodborne pathogens and we were done. You know, and you were done and it took an hour. Now we're looking at three hours of mandated training and we have to find time during some of those days to give them, to give them time to try to, to do that. Not to mention just getting to the classrooms at the beginning of the year. So we only have so many days and so many hours to work with. We're just trying to be creative. We know it's, it's three days this year that are inconvenient. We'll work on some, some options that we can work with, with our partners around doing some things for parents to be able to drop off. But we're just trying to be creative and find time to, to do the things we need to do on top of the things that were mandated to do.
So do you see this as something that we will be repeating every year or is this because we have I-ready?
This is front-loaded, this is front-loaded, a kind of thing like this year, we're front-loading this, getting as much as we can. And I don't foresee it being a regular practice, no.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor of Boe 10 to approve the amended district school calendar? Say aye. Any opposed? The calendar's approved. That moves us out of the consent agenda and into our committee reports.
Can I just make one mention before that?
Sure.
So I believe we have two of our new in, people who are being approved tonight in our, in the crowd. So if you're there, stand up. This is Devon Lamar. He will be taking over as the new assistant principal of Kingston High School.
Welcome.
Thanks, Devon, welcome.
So we'll begin with our Audit and Finance Committee. Priscilla?
Thank you. The committee met on July 25th, 2023. We had Mark Budet, the auditor, present to the committee. Payroll audit, all found items are low to medium risk. Mr. Budet will present to the board on the audit and risk assessment. I think he said September.
Yes.
I think so, okay. The committee spoke about the findings on the audit and how those things need to be fixed. The easy fixes need to be addressed immediately with a plan to remedy all other findings. Mr. Budet then left the meeting. The committee moved and seconded the Claims Auditor Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund reports and recommended them to the board for approval. At this time, I'd like to move to have the Claims Auditors Treasurers and Extra Classroom Activity Funds reports accepted by the board.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
We're good.
Mr. Lamb asked about the leftover money in the Extra Classroom Activity Fund at the, at the middle and high school and why that money doesn't go to the students. Class and club advisors should be assisting students on where that money could and should be spent. This should be part of the auditor's training with the advisor. Extra, external auditors are working in the boardroom to complete the external audit at this time. Mrs. Lau will meet, I did, meet with them on, as Chair of Audit and Finance Committee. Mrs. Carbin explained a budget transfer that needs to happen to close out this previous school year. Internal audit, the board voted at the last meeting to perform the next internal audit on food services. Meeting schedule, because there is no new board president, the meeting schedule cannot be addressed at this time. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Lamb asked about an update on all fields and their upkeep. Mr. Lamb asked, asked about the playgrounds and the flooring being used. Mrs. Lau asked about all playgrounds. Mr. Reinhardt will provide an update from Mr. Bogart, Bogart, who is in constant contact with the contractors and suppliers. Mrs. Lau inquired about the payroll clerk who left earlier this year. Ms. Carbin explained that the test has been given and the district is awaiting the results of that civil service test. Dr. Collins asked about the KHF swimming pool and the possibility of using it for younger students and transportation in that area. Mrs. Lau asked about summer school buses and being late. And also asked about when the transportation schedule will be out for the 2023 school year. Mr. Lamb asked about the governor's pilot bill that is being put into effect. Mr. Shaw will discuss this at the next board meeting and explain it to the entire board. Pilots are affecting our senior citizens. Ms. Carbin spoke about the claims auditor's position and getting that person approved and trained. Our next meeting will be August 22nd, 2023 at 9:00 AM. The meeting, the meeting adjourned at 10:30 AM. Any questions or concerns? It was a long meeting.
It sounded like it touched on everything, not just like the finance.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Reinhardt had to sit in for you.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Policy Committee.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met on August 4th at 9:30 in the boardroom. The minutes of the June 2nd meeting were accepted and corrected. Discussion of the Community Standard of Dress Policy 5340, yes again, addressed the final recommendations of the parents' and students' feedback. The final document presented to the full Board of Ed reflects changes made to the overall policy and particularly to the student dress code. These changes reflect the intent of the Policy Committee to speak to all students and our desire to ensure a safe and comfortable learning environment. In order to allow for public input and to provide enough time for the document to be included and distributed at the beginning of the new school year, the public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM prior to the public session of the board on the meeting, the meeting date on August 23rd. So that revised dress code is in your library, so you should have it there to, to look at it. And if anybody has any feedback, I'm glad to take it.
There's two of them that are rolling around.
One's the old one, maybe?
One's the new.
The one says student dress code. That's the newer one.
So little.
I can rename them so that they stay old and, and new.
Yeah, that would come back in time. Because, yeah, because one read through and one was, I had questions about.
Hopefully the new one is the one you didn't have questions.
I read first, I had a lot violating to do, so I hope it wasn't that one. We'll see.
Okay, the discussion of Policy 1900, parent, families and community engagement followed. The search and replace neglected to do its job, so all references to parents and parents and families, or, excuse me, parents slash parents should be replaced by family or families to be more inclusive of persons and parental relation. There was feedback by DLT members that was received by the committee and implemented to improve the readability and consistency of the policy that we had. So the changes that we included are in the policy that you have in your library. We also included direct referencing to Policy 1250, school volunteers, and Policy 1300, visitors to schools to ensure families were familiar with those policies that have a strong connection to Policy 1900, family and community engagement. Our final discussion was in regards to artificial intelligence. There were two specific additions recommended to the Code of Conduct. One on page 14, under Level 3, which would expand Number 4 to, quote, intentional plagiarism using someone else's work and claiming it as your own, comma, inclusive of artificial intelligence, intelligence or lack of attribution. So that, it didn't really change the code in any way, it just included it in the same sentence as plagiarism. Also on page 18, under Student Responsibilities, Number 14, quote, to use their own words, creations and knowledge in completing examinations, projects and reports. Students who cheat and/or plagiarize, including the use of artificial intelligence, use the ideas or words of another without full attribution will receive an academic sanction. And it goes on to specify what those might be. Changes to the Code of Conduct Policy 5300 also require an opportunity for public hearing, which will also follow the student dress code on August 23rd prior to the public session of the meeting of the Board of Ed. Thank you as always to the careful and dedicated attention to every word by all Policy Committee members. I mean, the meetings are really intense, but people are always good-humored about it and really attentive and I appreciate it. The next meeting of the Policy Committee is scheduled for September 15th at 9:30 in this room. Any questions? Yeah.
It's more of a comment. I appreciate the, kind of, the work that you did on the dress code and engaging students and talking to families about how to change that. And I noticed that the major change really is the specificity around like the two fingers and like the arms and the whole like that to do.
There was a real effort. It's so interesting because we went all the way around, almost 360 degrees from where we started. But we, we really tried to be gender neutral, to avoid body shaming, recognizing that the same clothes fit different kids in a different way. And to just be enforceable. So to have straps that you have to measure just seems ridiculous. But we were really, our first try, go-around was really almost no restrictions and people wanted them. People wanted the specificity. And that's true with students and the parents. So we went back and revisited the old code and just tried to make it a little more enforceable and, and helpful.
I appreciate that, the whole process and exactly what you said, clothes fit people differently. And so the, that effort to avoid the body shaming and the gender neutral, I think is actually pretty important.
The inclusion of the parents was, or, and the students especially, was just mind-blowing. It was very, very eye-opening and helpful. And so really in policy, I think we try when we can to have the people who are involved in those policies at least read over or give us input in some way. And it's helpful. And we have a very diverse collection of people around the table.
I, so I'm reading the one that I had a lot of, yellow one, which is the newer one, which is fine. I can, contrasting it with the other one. The only comment I have on that particular standard of dress policy is, under the headwear that obscures the full view, there is listed in there scarves. under the headwear that obscures the full view, there is listed in there scarves. And technically, a a hijab? Hijab is termed as a headscarf.
Right, but the important thing is that it doesn't obscure the face. So really, that's why that's definitional to that particular thing. Because discretion is part of the dress code. We can't really eliminate that. So as long as we, you know, even with caps, the visor
Do we have to include the word scarves?
Well, because you can wear a scarf that could, could in fact hide part of your face.
Okay, thanks.
So it's really a safety issue, more than anything, in terms, you know, we have cameras, we have security, but if we can't see who the children are, make sure that the children belong in our building. That's really part of it. And also, there's a piece in there for religious reasons.
I did, I think this is the statement that I was just coming to because I feel like if, so let's just say I have to wear a full garb because that's my religion, right? Even if it covers here, and that's what my religion is, right? I think it's hard for me to think about having to go to a school and ask if I can wear what is religiously appropriate for me. And I, the heat, the
I don't think
Full-face garb, I mean, like, because some people cannot show up anything with their eyes.
Right.
And that would cover your face, and I don't know why I would have to ask permission to do that. So I just, that's why I don't like the word scarves in there, the rest of it I can get.
I understand. I think the concern was that we had to be specific enough and then allow for those exceptions that are outliers.
To have to ask permission.
Well, they don't really ask permission. I, well, I guess.
Well, it also has to be a communication, and it has to be legitimacy. I mean, you know, we don't, when there's, there are students who legitimately are in that situation and students who maybe aren't. So we still, as administration of the building, we still have to walk through that. So next thing you know, you have 15 kids coming in saying, oh, no, this is what I do, when it's really what they're not. So you have legitimate, someone who's legitimately in that, you know, that is their religion, and someone who is not necessarily being genuine with us. So to have that kind of, you know, conversation with the family about it makes sense and creates that, avoids that others.
I understand your concern about it because we had a conversation about it, but we had, I think we tried to err on safety. And I don't believe that anybody would ever deny a legitimate request. I mean, there are even medical conditions where kids might have to have something covering their face for permanently or for some time, but we can't just allow that to be the rule. That's the outlier. So, you know, we still have people who mask, who choose to mask because of COVID.
That was the other, that was the other question. That if a student, if a student wants to wear a mask because they feel safer with a mask in COVID season. Again, I just, it's hard to say why you would have to ask for something for medical purpose.
It's not really an ask, it's more as, I think, a communication between the family and the school so that everybody is informed appropriately. But, I mean, I'm not discounting your concern. I just think that it did come up in conversation, and I think the consensus was in favor of just that notification.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I don't know so much, I guess I didn't see the prior code, so I don't know what changed here. But the way I read this one section, and it goes back to, again, the scarves and the mask, but students should wear clothing or accessories that are absent of, and then it jumps down to headwear, and it says hoods. So are we saying that a student, I know that you're saying it just means that it can't cover the face, but the way I read those sentences put together, I can't wear a hooded sweatshirt, is that?
You can wear a hooded sweatshirt, you just can't have that on.
Down, because that's not, I mean.
Well, as long as it's not pulled.
As long as it's not obscuring your face.
Yeah, you can wear a hooded sweatshirt.
So students should wear clothing or accessories that are absent of headwear that obscures the face, which includes hoods. So we're saying that they should wear clothing that is absent of hoods?
No, absent of hiding, of obscuring the face. It's absent of obscuring the face. If you're using the hood to obscure your face.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's awkward. I mean, not all of it is perfect. If you can come up with a better suggestion.
I got it, okay.
We will take it. We will take it. We agonized over words, believe me. Forso was a really problematic.
I mean, I think, looking at the old one now, I can see a lot of improvements. I just think.
Well, you know, if you come up with something that you feel would be more legitimate or useful, then please send it to, you know, the board.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
I did, I did this.
And we'll certainly try. It's going to be here.
It's on my wall.
Along the air.
I can see where there's a lot of toddle, and it is improved. I think it reads, you know, I just, okay, I sent my piece.
I do think we have a approval though.
Yes, we have a motion.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have to get rid of this on my screen. So we need to vote, because the Policy 1900 really had just changes that didn't change the spirit of the policy at all, we can vote on that tonight. So I would like to move Policy 1900, Family and Community Engagement, for tonight's vote and ratifying the policy.
We need a second.
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Jordan, for your
We need to vote.
I know, I know. I just wanted to, thank you. That's the discussion. All in favor of Policy 1900, Parent, Family, and Community Engagement? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That policy is approved. Our last committee report, Teaching and Learning, Dr. Collins.
Thank you. This, this report is actually for a June 22nd meeting, so it's, some will feel like old news because things have happened since then. So the first item on our agenda was an update on the Montessori program at GW. And at that point in time, the district had received a report from the external consultant that was hired to review the Montessori program. And the major recommendations included materials, teacher and TA training in Montessori, an in-house Montessori coach, curriculum writing, and work cycle adjustments for the instructors to move toward uninterrupted three-hour blocks. At that time of the meeting, the administration was working toward sort of matching those recommendations to the budget and to align priorities and maybe set up sort of a time rollout over the next year or two. And they presented this already, so I'll just, this is my editorializing those minutes, that they presented this at a meeting on August 1st, and those recommendations in that report are now on the website, the GW website. Thanks for that, the Teaching and Learning team. One last point that was discussed during that GW update was that the set plans, these comprehensive plans for the school, will include the recommendations from the consultant, and that is part of this upcoming meeting on August 24th, which is to involve the community members and incorporate Montessori perspectives into that report. We then had an update on the district-wide literacy committee. So this literacy committee consists of 50 members or so that include reading teachers, SLPs, special ed, ENL teachers, classroom teachers. And it was initially formed during the COVID pandemic. But this, the focus now for this group is shifting toward moving methods, the methods of teaching reading, so that all teachers are using skills-based approaches. So this shift was happening a lot this summer in terms of, there is a core leadership team that includes reading department representatives, foundations trainers, writers workshop consultant, and literacy specialist, so someone who is Teacher of the Year in 2016, Dana McDonough. And this committee was working and is working to audit current materials that we are using to see if and what materials can meet the needs for the new approaches that we'd like to emphasize without having to repurchase all new materials. So professional development is also being offered to support teachers as they shift in their teaching method. And members of the literacy team were encouraged and able to apply for curriculum writing this summer. The discussion around this was interesting. The TNL committee discussed how challenging it can be to reorient methods and reorient teachers who are trained in particular methods. So during training, special attention is being paid to explaining the why behind these pedagogical and curricular shifts. Regarding foundations, which is a curriculum that we've talked a lot about and is consistent with this new skills-based reading approach, the grade three rollout will occur this year. And training is being offered for both grade one and grade two teachers who are new in their positions for this upcoming year to ensure that everyone is consistent in their delivery of this instruction. There's also, there was discussion, as part of this discussion around the literacy committee, that phonics instruction at higher grades is also being incorporated. So the iReady program will be integrated into grades four, five, and six, and that includes and emphasizes phonics. Discussions are occurring right now where, in the quest period, iReady could be incorporated to potentially fill the gaps for those students who are still building their skills in phonics. And it was clarified that iReady is not an all-computer-based program that includes direct instruction. I think there were some misunder, misperceptions around that. We then spoke about Regents exams. So the practice since COVID-19 has been to take the higher two grades, the Regents and/or final exam, to factor into the student's final grade. And this approach has aired on the side of the students. And this year, the district retained that, this past year, the district retained this grading practice. So we just talked about looking long-term, and it sounds as though the administrators right now are involving teachers in this conversation about how to deal with final assessments. These comprise 15% of a student's grade. So teachers were surveyed, and the goal is to collectively generate a menu of options that are, that sort of expand our idea of assessment, to include projects, portfolios, and also exams, so teachers have some flexibility in how they assess student learning, and yet also maintaining rigor and consistency among instructors. So we discussed the fact that just project-based approaches have been added, have added value in terms of inclusion and relevancy. Dr. Hunter had presented, and many of those projects and the teachers with whom he's worked have provided inspiration and training around example of what happens when teachers let students select their final project topics and build a curriculum around those, and teachers build the curriculum around those ideas. So the decision of how to treat Regents exams in the final grade will be made by late August and early September. Is that still the timeline? Oh, as of June. And the last topic, I think, I don't know, we have two more topics. Two or three, middle school class sizes. We were just talking about the fact that during 2022, there were 30 students in many fifth-grade classes, which is, and kind of talking about the origin of why those students, those classes were big and how, what to do about it, if anything. So many factors influence class size, and that they'll fluctuate a lot with the total number of students in each cohort. So from year to year, it can be very hard to predict. So for example, at Miller, we had really large fifth-grade cohort in 2022, but a much smaller fifth-grade cohort for 2023. And reducing these class sizes by opening more sections or adding more staff requires more space, and that tends to be one of our major limitations. So we kind of shifted the, the discussion actually, to talk about, rather than focusing on class size and the number of students, maybe just focusing on the student-to-adult ratios and thinking really carefully about, if, in classes with more students, maybe we need more TAs, consultants, or coaches, something to balance out those, the larger number of students. And that at the middle school, and potentially all of K-12, would benefit from professional development for properly using TAs, coaches, or co-teaching scenarios. And then we, kind of unrelated tangent, but lovely, spark of good news was that we discussed seventh-grade language instruction, and we're hiring a Spanish teacher to fill, right? To fill this need. So we've canceled the contract at the online program. We have real, live language teachers. So, and moving teachers around within the world language department to help students who might have had sort of a substandard experience before is very much on the minds of the administration right now. And so the last item of that meeting was looking at the Q4 STAR scores. So these are assessments in the fourth quarter, and it's clear that students are still struggling, likely due to pandemic, but it's consistent with some scores before the pandemic as well. So we're not meeting our goals that we set at the time of our funding, when we discussed what interventions are happening to improve these numbers. Most of these are curricular right now, at least that was the focus of our discussion, and include foundations to really help our younger students with reading and potentially address the drop in reading levels that we see as they move up through their education. iReady for both ELA and math, and improving vertical continuity among curriculum across the years. And same with, we've been using, sort of piloting different math curriculum in elementary, and so really honing in on one and focusing on PD and efficacy. And we talked a little bit about how the new iReady will replace STAR in terms of diagnostic and keeping track of sort of internally how our students are doing and the crosswalk or the language so that we can compare across years between our STAR and iReady scores in the future. We don't actually have the date of our next meeting yet because we haven't set the next year's calendar for that. So stay tuned.
So I have a question. The, we're going to have a live teacher for science, Spanish, for seventh grade. So the eighth-grade students that are now moving up to eighth grade, are they going to be behind quite a bit?
Yeah, that was some, the discussion was that there would be people and extra coaches in place to help them, give them support. I don't know if you want to refine my answer beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they're, you know, we're aware that those kids might need some extra support simply, so that's an ongoing conversation, but we're very excited about our new Spanish hires so that everyone, you know, we are fully staffed at Bailey and Miller's. We won't have to utilize any other kind of a program, a real-life teacher, so.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Teaching and Learning? Thank you, Dr. Collins. We are at the Old Business section of the agenda. Any Old Business?
I have something that can come here. I know there were some concerns voiced about my attendance on, via computer at a meeting. So I called NISPA today to clarify the rule, and we were, in fact, correct in saying that somebody can be remote, a board member can be remote, as long as their address where they are remote is published along with the meeting notice. And since I was in North Carolina, unfortunately, nobody came to the meeting with me. But they could have, and since they could have, it was appropriate for me to be there. There was a change when COVID happened, but we are now functioning pre-COVID in terms of open meetings and the ability to use remote. So, and actually, I could be counted in the quorum. I could even be counted in the quorum, which was not necessary.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
I just wanted to clarify, we have committee assignments that have to be made. So Karen, I think you have information on who has requested what, and maybe you and Robin and I can sit and look at those, like, soon so that we can get assignments and, you know, be ready to roll for committee meetings coming up. If that's okay with everybody, okay. Any other Old Business?
I guess this comes under Old Business. I just wanted to thank Mr. Spicer for his leadership last year as president and for always being so gracious and welcoming to all the people who came to make comments. And I appreciate his service, and I want to thank him publicly, so thank you.
It's reciprocal, thank you.
Any New Business? Hearing none, we are at the second public comment.
Board member announcements.
Oh, that's after. That's right.
So small, I couldn't see it.
Any comments from the public at this point?
I would love to comment.
Can I take the mic?
Your name?
Maya Hazan. Maya Hazan. I would like to comment on the dress code thing. Thank you so much. I didn't know how much effort went into it, but moving forward didn't know how much effort went into it. But moving forward, if, the main thing is how do you actually enforce it? You know, you have so many things there. In the meantime, we in the school see things like, you know, by the seventh period, and everybody's confused who is exactly supposed to enforce these things, you know? Because the teachers just want to teach, and they're like, this is the seventh period now, and if the kid has been here in school wearing a bra all day long, you know, why should I be the one? You know, we're also being told very conflicting things. So I really am asking you to please make some rules in place. Who is enforcing the dress code, especially on a high school level? Because I think this is where, you know, we have kids with a playbook, white shirts all day long, every day. Nobody says anything. I was like, who is in charge? Who is making those? Because there's so many kids, and the hallways are full of kids. And, you know, there are different provisions when they go into classrooms. They are allowed to have hoodies when they're in the hallways, you know? So please, just make it clear so that nobody's confused and it's, the teachers don't have to be sweating and, you know, it's very, very confusing. It's been confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Mrs. Shear?
Hello. Well, I'll identify for myself anyway. I'm Nora Shear, and I just retired from the board after 12 years I taught in the District 38. I want to congratulate the newly-elected officers, the newly-elected members. For the people that I had the pleasure of working with, I do miss you dearly. Not that I wouldn't miss you guys any better, but I, I do miss you very much. And I know how much work you've committed to. And Mrs. Anderson just mentioned the committees. That's where the nitty-gritty goes, you know, all the work goes. And I know every single one of you is either on one or more committees or chairs of committee. And I don't think sometimes the public is aware of how many hours you put in, and nobody runs for the school board without wanting to do the best we can for students in the district. And I want to say that Dr. Patalino attends all the committee meetings. Mrs. Siri, all of them, if not. I, I hope that they've reduced your attendance requirement, but it would be nice if they did. But I, I do know how many hours you put in. I, I do appreciate all the work you've done. I want to thank Mr. Spicer. I know that he did a wonderful job last year in terms of creating a really positive atmosphere for the board. You know, I know things sound contentious, but I, I have every confidence that you're all going to have a successful collaboration this year for the good of the students in the district, and I want to thank you in advance.
Thank you, Mrs. Shear. Anyone else?
Thank you. I'm Deborah Gilman Spicer, Stephen Spicer's wife. And I'd like to also echo Nora. I understand how hard all of you work on a volunteer basis and, and the leadership. I don't, I really agree. Until you really step in the shoes, no one would ever know exactly the amount of work and time and dedication that you all put into the project. And, you know, Steve, I see it, you know, all that you do. And so thank you for your service to the district. So my comment is very much in reference to the DEET stadium. Do we own DEET stadium as the school owns it? Everyone, everyone. So Kingston owns it. Because that gentleman, the project manager, will he come back again? Okay. Because it didn't seem like we were able to ask questions of him. So I had a few questions in reference to some of the things that he spoke about in reference to the bonding. And there seemed to be a delta between what was being bonded and what was actually the course, and wondering about that. And also the delays in the job, which all of you voiced your concern. And so is it a one-year duration from August to August? Is that clear? It was a 12-month? So it's been NTP, it's been awarded and NTP'd in August. And the architect of record is the designers who designed the project, and then they hire, or there's, there was a 16, there were 16 people, I should say, 16 companies who bid on the job. And is that when the lowest bidder received the bid? So it's not like the lowest of three, it's the lowest bidder that received it. So just from my own experience, I'm a mechanical engineer by trade. I work with the School Construction Authority in New York City. And so I'm very familiar with a lot of these things. And I think the concern in the delays is who is regulating the approval process. And I know in New York City, we have a lot of regulations, particularly with the new regulations. And once you start digging below grade, and that process of approval is extremely, it's, it's a long process. I don't know what happens here in, you know, in the suburban area, but that is a concern. And I'm also wondering if in the contract that they bid, is there incentives for the contractor to bring the job in early? Like if you have, is these delays, do they know there's six months for this approval or six months for water? I'm not sure all of the regulations that go into that project, but that's where I think the delays will be. Sorry. And I, I'm just wondering how that's being mitigated. So I would like to look, you know, I'd like to be a part of that conversation as part of the public if, if that gentleman does come back to present again. And thank you again for all that you do, and particularly, Steve.
Thank you.
Can you be our representative?
Hello, my name is Shimon Jansen. I have two students in the district, one who's starting high school and one who's in sixth grade at Bailey. First, I want to say, I had some similar questions for the gentleman with the project. One of them, he mentioned bringing the road around the track down to level with the rest of the property. Does that mean that there will no longer be a walkway for the community to walk? I don't know if you've ever been there at 5:00 in the morning, as I have, but there's a lot of individuals that do use that space. He mentioned the basketball courts, but he didn't say whether they were staying or going. They're staying.
They're moving.
Well, they're moving now. Okay, thank you for that information. I wasn't expecting you to answer right on the spot. So thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to comment on, and really the reason I came, I wasn't planning on speaking. Dr. Collins, you mentioned the part about iReady and the changing in the literacy program at our elementary schools. I know, of course, I am an educator. I know the undertaking that this is going to be for our teachers to change what they're doing, but I cannot stress enough how amazing this is going to be for our students. My sixth grader struggles immensely with reading, to the point where I was having her tested for dyslexia. What they told me is that her issue is not dyslexia. She does not have a learning disability. She simply doesn't understand phonics because she was taught using whole language. Members of the board or the public, if you have not had a chance to look at the pot or listen to the podcast, sold a story. I strongly encourage you to listen to that. It is remarkable. What Fuentes and Pennell did to our children is shameful. So I applaud the district for allowing this to happen. I'm sure that there's a financial undertaking as well as time and personnel. So thank you for making that change.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now we go to board member announcements. Mrs. Lau?
Sure. Okay. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank Mr. Lamb for his service to the students and the district. While I am disappointed that he felt it necessary to resign, I certainly also understand his position. I can say that at all times, I have felt that Mr. Lamb had the best interest of the students and district at heart. Thank you, Mr. Lamb, for your service.
Thank you. Any other announcements? I would just like to thank the board for your support and ask that you support me each and every day, each and every meeting, as we journey through this together. I think this is a great board, and we have great work and important work to do. So together, there's no I in team. And we are a team, and we will do what we have to do. So, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all right.
There is no I in team, but there is a me.
All right.